We'll start with Commissioner introductions, start with Commissioner Lynch and going down.
Thank you so much for being here. My name is Peter Lynch. I'm the Commissioner for ANC 34G SMD 05.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Nash, I represent Single Member District 03.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Goslin. I'm the Commissioner for District 6, which is basically the west side of Connecticut, back to 42nd Street, the peninsula to the east, down to Nevada. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Gore. You guys can't hear? Yeah. This one's all, it's all. Okay, my name is Lisa Gore. I'm a Commissioner with ANC 34G 01, and my SMD is Hawthorne and Burnaby Woods.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bruce Sherman. I'm the Commissioner for Single Member District 02.
Hi, everyone. Zach Ferguson for Single Member District 07.
And Commissioner Zeldin will be with us online tonight. So we'll get started in terms of meeting procedures.
Lisa?
Yes.
Hi, it's Michael Zeldin. I just wanted to say-
I can't control the echo from here. I mean, it's coming from the speakers. We're all- Want me to try that one?
No. Lisa?
Is this one better?
Yeah.
Lee, Lisa?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Michael Zeldin. I am joining virtually because I'm dealing with my mom's rehospitalization tonight. And so we're in family crisis. I will be listening as much as I can, but I will be in and out as we speak to oncologists and like. And I represent 3G 04.
Thank you, Michael.
So that's gonna be better without the monitors?
Is that any better? Okay. All right. So we'll get started. In terms of meeting procedures, we have a pretty long agenda tonight. We're gonna have a lot of discussion on the Civic Core Survey Resolutions. On the ANC website, there was an initial resolution. Since then, the Commissioners have been working on a revised draft. We also have a second resolution by Commissioner Sherman on the Civic Core Survey issue. And we'll be, you know, discussing both of those. In terms of meeting procedures, when you, when it comes time to speak, I ask that everyone just line up at the mic. I'm gonna try to allow community members about an hour. But we are gonna hard stop at community at 7:20. That'll allow the Commission about 30 minutes for debate and discussion and vote on the resolution. So also be mindful, we have about 64 people registered online right now. It's growing. We're at about 40. So not only are the people that are lined up at the mic needing to speak, but also the ones that are online that you can't see. So that's potentially, you know, probably close to about 100 people. So if you can keep your comments to a minute or two minutes, usually we allow community three minutes. I'm not gonna stop you if you take the three minutes, but just be mindful of the other residents that are trying to get an opportunity to speak. And again, we will hard stop at community comments at 7:30. For people that are online, if you want to speak, when this topic or another topic comes up, please use the raise your hand feature. That will put you in the key or queue, and I will be able to promote you and allow you to speak. I ask for people online and in person, do not overspeak your fellow residents. I know this is a very controversial topic, but I ask again, as I did with the last meeting, that we all respect each other's viewpoint and opinions. And let's make sure everyone is able to get their comments out. So with that, we'll move on to the agenda. Commissioners, in terms of adoption of the agenda, do you have any changes?
None.
Just a clarification that we are intending tonight to discuss the resolution that would convey the results to the city, but not the resolution that would present the Commission's position on the results to the city, just so that everyone here also understands that.
Yep. Okay. Commissioners, all those in favor of the agenda?
I'm sorry, a point of clarification, Chair Gore. Are we discussing the deed restriction at the Chevy Chase Civic Core?
That is on the agenda.
Are we passing a resolution on that?
Hang on a minute, Commissioners, we're out of order. The agenda pretty much says what we have on here. Right now, we're at adoption of the agenda. If there's no changes to the agenda, we need to take a vote, and we will discuss what we talk about during that section of the agenda process. So I'mma call the vote on this. All those in favor of the agenda, please raise your hand. One, two.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed? Abstention? Okay. Six, I mean, five zero one. Okay. Next portion of the agenda is a consent agenda to approve. Peter, did you inadvertently leave this on here?
No, I don't think we've approved either the October 23rd or the November-
Are those the, okay.
I sent them around.
Yeah.
Got it, okay. The October 23rd and November 13th minute meetings and the check reimbursement to Commissioner Gore for the final survey postcard, which was $260.96. Any questions on a consent agenda, Commissioners? Okay. All those in favor of approving a consent agenda, please raise your hand. Commissioner Zeldin, if you can give me a voice vote? All those opposed? Any extensions? Six zero zero. Okay. And this is a section of the agenda where we have community members for about 15 minutes or so, discuss any pressing issues that is not on the ANC agenda. And sometimes we'll get people that'll want to speak about something that is on the agenda, so I'll correct you and say, we're gonna talk about that at a later time. But this is for you all to talk to us about things that we don't have on the agenda that you want to bring up. And one thing that I want to do at this section is invite the Lieutenant up to speak and give us an update on some of the things going on with MPD and Second District and Commissioner Lynch.
Yes. So to the question of, will there be a resolution tonight about the deed restriction? What's the answer to that?
Yes, we have a, I think Commissioner Goslin has a resolution.
I circulated this afternoon testimony that I'm prepared to give as an individual Commissioner, but I offer it to the Commission as testimony that we might-
Can you go to the mic?
That we might vote, we might vote on as Commission testimony instead of just an individual Commissioner testimony. Okay?
So we, just to clarify, so other people know-
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna, I wanna, I'm gonna cut, both of you guys are out of order. You're both out of order. This is a section of the agenda, and I'm gonna stick with the agenda because we run over every time. So we're starting our meeting at 6 o'clock because I got a call from DPR basically threatening to cancel us out of this room. We are gonna have time to discuss that, Mr. Lynch, Commissioner Lynch, but I would ask that you discuss it in the portion of the agenda that it resides under. So Lieutenant Olivier.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I'm in charge of PSA 201 as far as the law enforcement aspect of the-
You've got, you gotta speak closer to the mic.
As far as law enforcement aspect of the PSA. So what I'm gonna do tonight is I'm gonna let you all know a 30-day comparison of last year where crimes are today. Okay? Can you hear me now?
Yeah. The people online won't be able to hear you if you don't-
Okay, so same time last year, we had 31 crimes. This time for 30-day span, we have 12. So we actually had a drop. As far as property crimes, 30 and 12, that's what's driving the crimes in 201. It's theft of autos, burglaries, stolen autos, property crimes, like we said. Theft of autos last, last year this time was 25. Right now, we're at six. And I say that we're at six, six reported crimes. We still have residents not reporting the stuff. So this is updated every 24 hours. This come from DC Crime Cards. Anybody could look it up. Okay, so we're at six right now. And as far as violent crimes, we have nothing. No, no robberies, no carjackings or anything of that sort. So all the violent crimes are good. But if you want to look it up, it's DC Crime Cards. Just Google it up, you can see it. It's updated every 24 hours. The other thing I want to talk about real quick, it's the holiday season. We had one reported case of porch pirate. People coming stealing your packages off the porch. If there's someplace you could ask or put in your mailing request, like behind a shrub or something where it's not seen from the street, that's something you could do. That's what I do personally. People leaving packages in the vehicles is another thing. Be mindful and be careful when you're out shopping, that you pay attention to what's going on around you, as far as people looking at you, following you, following you to your car. When you, when you go to place items in your car, if you have to place items at home into your trunk, put it in your trunk, not where at the destination you are. Because then they see you there, and they'll go into it. Place them in your trunk. Keep everything out of sight, out of sight, out of sight, out of mind. That's, that's what we used to say in the military. So, and that's all I have for you. Anybody have any questions? Make it quick.
The stats were theft from auto last year, 25, and this year we're at six?
Six for a 30-day period this time last year.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're at six for 30 days. Let's say a month.
Yeah, underreporting definitely is a big issue.
And we have a couple of those, I think we're in discussion about on our emails.
Okay. You got a question back there?
Very quickly, I just saw in the post that they're giving away those air chips.
Air tags, AirPods and AirTags and tiles, what they called.
Is this area going to be-
It's DC, it's DC wise.
So I know that you can get them at RFK Stadium.
Excuse me, Claudia, you'll have to speak into the mic though, so folks online can hear you.
I'm sorry. It's my understanding that you can get AirTags from DC government, and they're giving them away at RFK Stadium. Is there a place closer for our neighborhood to receive those?
I believe the way the Department of DC is doing it, it's gonna go citywide. But if you, if you, if you would like to get one, feel free to go over there. But I think the location changes.
We didn't hear you, Lieutenant.
I think, I think the location changes where they give away the AirTags, but feel free right now, like the young lady said, they're giving them away at RFK right now. So feel free to go over there and grab some. But I think the location changes periodically, probably like every month. I'll have to look back at that and update you guys with that.
Okay.
Lieutenant Olivier, just to note, you're well aware of this, that based on our recent conversations, Captain Haskins has agreed to place camera cars, police cars, at different locations. There's been one on a number of occasions at Military and Oregon to detect cars coming into our area, to be able to, be able to track and trace cars that potentially are involved in the break-ins. We've had, we continue to have, there's another reporting problem, but certainly, as you know, car break-ins continue to plague the community. And this is a step I want to commend you for taking and Second District for taking, so we thank you for that.
You're welcome. We have a lot of other stuff happening, but you guys, you guys are strapped for time, so.
Any questions online from Lieutenant Olivier? Olivier, always.
All my life.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other community members have anything else under this section? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to, thank you both for coming. The continued discussion and possible vote on the Civic Core Survey Resolution. In a way, we'll handle that. Both Commissioner Goslin, well, Commissioner Goslin has an amended resolution. Commissioner Sherman has an alternative resolution. And before we get started, you're still presenting your amended resolution?
Presenting my amended.
And did you want to still present your alternative resolution at this meeting?
I thought we would hold off on these other resolutions. Tonight, again, we're focused on the resolution to convey the results. The resolution is commenting on the results, right?
That's the amendment. So I'm just asking you for your-
For mine, I think we'll do it on Monday.
Got it. Okay, I just wanted to be sure. So the discussion will be on Commissioner Goslin's resolution that he has since amended from the original posting that you saw online. So I'll turn this section over to Commissioner Goslin.
Thank you. And before I get started, I'd like to address Commissioner Lynch's question about the possible testimony, discussion of possible testimony concerning Councilmember Frumans three pieces of legislation that were affecting deed restrictions. Peter, it is on the agenda for discussion. I have penned testimony that I'm prepared to give as an individual. And if Commissioners object to voting on this and considering it for as Commission testimony, that's fine. I'll just go ahead and present it as an individual Commissioner. But, but the agenda, which was out last Wednesday, did have this on it for discussion and possible vote. So does that address the issue?
Thank you for a little bit of the clarification. And for others in the community, you may wonder why I abstained from the vote on the meeting and then have so many questions just on this part of the meeting. If I'm confused about what we are doing in this meeting, I can't imagine there's more clarity on your side. And that is not acceptable. It moves against our bylaws, and we need to correct that.
Okay.
Commissioner, let me just say that, so let's just, if we're trying to get on to a meeting that people understand, let's try to get to the substance of it. I mean, you, when I was doing the agenda, objected to anything but the subject that we are about to discuss being discussed. So I suggest that we go ahead and discuss it. Now, I want to, and that is a resolution, the first of two now involving the Community Center Library Site.
But let me just make one comment in terms of the statement. There's nothing that's being conducted here that's outside of the scope of our bylaws. The meeting was announced properly. Resolutions do not have to be submitted in advance. And again, please do not interrupt the meeting. Please, sir, do not do that. Do not, we're not a council. We're ANC, and you have a right, but you're not gonna overtake our meeting. Please act respectfully and let us get through the meeting so that people can talk. As I was saying, there's nothing that has been done inappropriate in terms of being inappropriate with our bylaws. That's a statement that is not factual. Okay, go on.
Can I ask a point of clarification on that? And I agree with Chair Gore, we need to talk about this and settle this amongst ourselves on behalf of you. So outbursts like that, please refrain. And we understand there's a lot of frustration. It's shared on this side as well. Can I ask a question? Is it within our bylaws, as a first-year ANC, I'm asking this as clarification, do we need to post a resolution that we vote on tonight, seven days prior to the meeting, which is what I had all-
No, we don't.
-assumed-
We don't.
Every other meeting.
That's not in the bylaws. We don't. That's best practice that, that's best practice that the ANC has tried to do. But there is, and people that have been familiar with this ANC for years know that we do not always accomplish that. Because what happens is what happened with the Civic Core Resolution. Sometimes we are working until four, five o'clock. That's why I'm late. Five o'clock, 5:45, 20 minutes before the meeting, trying to get the resolution together. So it's a best practice that we try to do that, but it doesn't always occur. And that is not, that's why it's not in the bylaw. Okay, so I wanna, thank you. I want to move Commissioner Goslin to the discussion.
So let me, I want to speak on two issues here to introduce this. And then I'm happy to read the resolution. First, I am sensitive to what Commissioner Lynch says about getting things up and so able to be seen by you. It would be great. We do not have a staff. We are, we are a volunteer board. I was up until 3 o'clock in the morning today working on this. I was, I spent much of my Thanksgiving working on the original resolution that, that many of the people in this audience objected to the structure of, and I'm trying to respond to that. But it isn't perfect that, that we don't have things up in due time. It would be great if we could. And the other thing I want to address, and this is an issue that Commissioner Lynch has brought up repeatedly, and there is some fairness to it, but related to the issue of, of the tempo at which this, this issue in particular, the Community Center Library, has been considered. It would be great in a perfect world to slow this train. I would love to, and in fact, this Commission, and in the year that Peter has been on this Commission, we have slowed the train repeatedly, but we are not making the schedule here. The city is. And if we do not try to speak on this subject, the city will just run right by us. Now, you may not like what I think we should say to the city. And part of what I'm gonna say tonight tries to address something that you, many of you very much did not like at our last meeting. But the notion that we are fast tempoing this is simply wrong. The city is doing this, and we, the notion that we can do any more, slow it any further. I'd just say, we have slowed it quite a bit in the last year. You may remember that on November 15th of last year, the city sprang upon us the term "surplusing" for the first time, and said that on December 15th, one month later, they were gonna have a hearing and go forward with this. And that didn't happen. We moved that off. The city then said it was gonna do a survey, and it was gonna do it again at a pace that we did not think made any sense at all. We got that slowed down. I, I agree, Peter, that in some perfect world, you know, this would be a much more deliberative process. Part of the reason it feels so high-tempoed is that the thing that should have been the forum for loads of these issues, the two-year small-area planning process, was kind of a cookbook, and so that we didn't have the advantage of those prior two years. But that, I continue to say to you, and I say to Peter, that, you know, yes, that's wrong, but what are we gonna do about it? Just take our bat and ball and go home? I don't think that makes sense. Peter, I really want, can I just present this, and then you can speak? I mean, I'd just like to get through the presenting of this, because I agree with you that this was not up on the website in the timely way that I would like it to be. So I ought to tell people what's in the resolution we're talking about. Is that fair?
It's fair. I think one thing that is not necessarily accurate is that we could have met in a week's time, in two weeks' time, given you fair notice of resolutions like this, allowed our Commission to debate these issues, to think through these issues, as opposed to turning over resolutions in days' time. Now, I understand that the city is also pushing this at a rapid speed, and I appreciate your explanation there and the frustration there. But there are things that we can do that also allows for the community to understand where we're at and for us to gather ourselves to present this. And that's the last I'll say on that piece, and I hope we can address this going forward.
All right. Let me, let me just speak about the resolution that is before us tonight. As I said in a note, first, the Commission and the zoning design and development standing committee of the Commission. I believe that what I presented in the resolution at our last meeting is the right way for us to proceed. But I am sensitive to the very sharp criticism that that resolution got, that it would bury the lead, so to speak, on the survey results. And so what I've done is I've separated out the survey results, conveying the survey results to the city, which is something we need to do if, for the city to be essentially forced to take those results seriously, from what I think should be our next step. And I have asked my fellow Commissioners to consider the resolution to just convey this to the city tonight and get it conveyed right away, so that when we take it up the issue, my alternative resolution about next steps and Commissioner Sherman's resolution, we do it away from, with the, with the, with the survey results already downtown, with the mayor, with the deputy mayor for planning and economic development, with OP, with members of the council. So that, that is my attempt, among other things, to try to bring, to try to respond positively to the criticism that the resolution that I originally wrote received at our last meeting. Let me just, as Peter says, this thing, in a perfect world, would have been up on the website a long time ago. It's up now, right? No, all right. It's not up now. All right. Let me then sort of just walk you through it. It basically says, its purpose is to convey to the Office of the Mayor, the Deputy Mayor for Economic and Planning, for planning and economic development, the Office of Planning, and members of the council, the results of ANC 3G's survey of residents about the future of Chevy Chase Community Center Library Site. It then borrows from Commissioner Sherman's alternative resolution, his original one, that, a summary of the city's proposals for this site. It says that the ANC has been involved in public discussions with the district and residents about redevelopment of the Community Center Library for almost a decade. It, it points up to Peter's point that in the past year, the Commission has repeatedly raised questions about the district's proposal for the site, including a January 23rd, 2023 resolution that said in part, whether the ANC would ever be in a position to support surplusing remains to be seen. But supportive surplusing cannot even be considered unless and until DEMPED works with the Commission to develop and execute a substantial community engagement process prior to a surplusing decision. And just speaking as one Commissioner, I would just say they haven't done that. In addition, we passed a resolution in May that said that we need, the community and the ANC need to be full partners with the district in the development of the request for proposal for the Civic Core and in changing zoning for Upper Connecticut Avenue. It explains the background of the survey, and then it says, as simply as possible, full results of the survey are available on the ANC's website and gives a link. It talks about, it briefly describes the responses, 280, 2,836 responses of these, 2,553 completed the survey, and of those, 2,297 were taking the survey were from the ANC community. This is an impressive response rate. Jerry Mallett, a former Commissioner who publishes a well-read newsletter, pointed out that not only is it a greater response rate, greater response than, than the previous, immediately previous surveys by the ANC, but by a very heavily publicized district survey in, in 2019, its housing equity report. It points out that we, that as part of the survey, we collected demographic data and are providing cross tabs to help DEMPED and the public get context for the, whether there's some over and under representation of various groups as compared with the census figures for our community. It talks about the respondents, and then it's, on the high points, concerning, first, concerning whether the Community Center Library Site should be redeveloped, and if so, in what way. It simply presents the findings in each category for all survey- It simply presents the, the findings in each category for all survey respondents and for those in the ANC community. So for example, it says that support, that of those, of all survey takers, support, those who said yes to support the proposed redevelopment of the Community Center and Library site with housing and including affordable housing, thirty-nine point six nine percent responded that they would support such redevelopment. Support only re, for, only redevelopment for the Community Center and Library, including the option of renovating the existing facilities, forty-seven point two seven, and so forth, okay? It, 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 it just presents these findings, as you have seen them, and then all of the commissioners have talked about, and, and they're up on our website, for affordable housing, surplusing, and maximum heights for buildings. Let me just, let me just finish this in a, what? Ma'am, ma'am, I, I, I really, I do, I do understand how important it is that you see it. But this is, what I'm trying to convey to you is this is, this is a plain vanilla, straight off, here are the results, city officials. And I, I, I ideally, I would have had it a week ago, but you know, I, I I got a life. I mean, I tried to, I mean, I, I don't do much else other than this. I certainly haven't done much else in the last forty-eight hours. So yes, it would be great if I'd gotten this done earlier. It would have been great if I'd realized I should have split it before Thanksgiving, but I didn't. And so there we are. Let me just finish this. I wanted to say, we, we, we just.
And community members, please start lining up at the mic if you want to speak. Again, we can't, we can't have people that.
It basically, just to finish, the resolved is basically the commission conveys the survey results to the district, to district decision-makers. Secondly, the commission asks decision-makers with the office of the mayor, DEMPED, and OP to review the results and additional material, if any, that it posts on the survey results website, and it gives the site. And then it says, the commission asks DEMPED to include the full results in the request for proposal for the Community Center Library site that the agency is expected to issue, and to provide the results to any potential bidder responding to the RFP, and that's it. Thank you.
Pardon my outburst earlier. Commissioner, with respect, you're on the right track. You're trying to provide data of community input. But with all due respect, it feels milquetoast and weak at best in terms of response from the commission that's supposedly representing Ward Three. We, this is not a minor matter in terms of, you know, whether we create high-rises or don't, or change the fabric, look, feel of the neighborhood. I've lived about twelve houses down on McKinley, where I've raised my family, I've lived and renovated and paid taxes on that property for twenty-five years. It's a big part of my family's nest egg. I don't feel that developing this center behooves my selfish property value interests, and I would imagine that most people in the room don't think an ugly high-rise in place of an ugly community center that doesn't serve the community is gonna improve our property values. The, the term "community center" and "public library" implies that they're there for the community and the public. If we're going to surplus this land to only serve a couple of hundred tenants that live in it, the mayor's office, and the builders that profit from it, we're screwing the community. I mean, we all live here, right? We care about what happens. There's a lot of gray hair. I got a lot myself now. But think about your kids, think about your grandkids. Your property value means something. Don't walk away from it because we can't slow the mayor's office down. Have, has the commission even made efforts to solicit pro bono support from attorneys in the neighborhood? Have we done any of that? I mean, we should be, this neighborhood should really be rallying the troops around this matter, regardless of where you come down on it. This is a big deal, and I can't think of a bigger, you know, vote that's come before this commission, or it's not even a vote, frankly. We're just being told what's happening from the way I see it. And that's not cool. That's not okay. I don't know why Muriel Lazar's decided to target this neighborhood. You know, we're gonna do a thirty percent low-income housing subsidy, fantastic, but guess what? There, there's fewer community amenities in this neighborhood than probably any other ward in the city. We have fewer green space acreage. We have fewer basketball tennis courts. We've got no public swimming service in the, I've raised a family here. I've got kids. We didn't have any of these things in this neighborhood that they've got in most other wards of the city. And now the mayor's office wants to come in and take this remaining paltry piece of crap community center, frankly, from us, rather than redevelop it and turn it into something that serves our community and our children and grandchildren. And I don't understand the passive response to this. It's not a small decision. Why aren't we up in arms regardless of your position on the matter? This has not been vetted, to your point earlier. If the council, if the commission doesn't have all the facts and feels it's maybe out of hand, maybe the community does too. This thing has to stop. I mean, we need to push the mayor's office back before a final decision, decision is made on this. It's just common right as a tenant and a community member for years.
Well, let me just say, and, and this goes to the discussion next Monday about, I mean, right now, what's before us is conveying in a way that I understand that much of this audience wanted last time to have it conveyed, straight up, no ifs, ands, or buts, no fancy interpretation, just send it. And I, 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 that's what I think the resolution tonight.
That's the starting point. You must have data that supports what the community's perspective is on the various topics. I've read your email briefly, so I saw it. But it is, the communication to a comment earlier has been ridiculously bad. It feels like the commission has hidden behind the cloak of COVID extended to have virtual meetings, and we can't get together and talk about very important things like this as often as we should. And it's, it does feel like a fast train going down the tracks, and you've expressed frustration earlier that you don't have the ability to slow the mayor's office. That, that's not an answer, is it? Can't we do better than that?
Hold it. I, I, actually, I think it is part of an answer. It's a question of how you best protect this community. And it's not an obvious thing to say, just say no, because.
I, I haven't said that once. I want to be heard, is what I want.
And I just, but with regard to a sort of not trying, sort of hiding behind COVID, I have to tell you, just tonight, I'm trying to get this technology. What, one of the things that happened in COVID is that people suddenly decided that hybrid meetings were simply the, the minimum performance. Well, yeah, okay, I, we just, I, I just think that.
I, I get it. There's a lot of challenges, and it may, I'm, I'm overzealous when I blame the commission for certain communication.
Point of order, Chair. I've been doing the time, and then this is not a slight against you. That was three minutes. And I would advise the commission, if this is gonna be a back-and-forth conversation, it will never end. So that was three minutes, and we should move on. Thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Claudia Russell, I live on Nebraska Avenue. Claudia Russell, I live on Nebraska Avenue. Democracies, and I dare say, communities function best when individuals participate in the civic process, including a survey of all residents. A healthy democracy and a healthy community require institutions that are both trustworthy and trusted. There was once a small area plan which showed images and diagrams of four-story buildings with a partial fifth-story bonus density for affordable housing. I hold them right here. I hold them, whether you agree or disagree with the small area plan, this was what was shown publicly. What happened? If the new development were built at the maximum proposed height, it would be eighty feet or six to seven stories plus penthouses. Reminding the commissioners that fifty-two percent of the respondents of the survey wanted a maximum building height of four stories. Only thirteen percent favored the eighty-foot height proposed by the city. This change in heights, we can only assume, is to incorporate as much housing as possible to make it an appealing equation for outside developers. Once this ANC bargain, oops, I mean, resolution is made, a precedent will be set. Where are our safeguards? Citizens in the past have voiced concerns about legitimate objectionable conditions, which are part of the basis of zoning judgment. This body, in the case of a sports development directly adjacent to neighbors with no buffers, ignored the citizens, especially those most affected. The ANC unanimously provided great weight to the BZA. DC accords great weight to ANC official resolutions as well. So it is important tonight to make sure that before any resolution goes out, should it incorporate housing, that there be safeguards. These safeguards would include appropriate setbacks and buffers adjacent to the residences. Maximum heights of no greater than four stories, measured from the Connecticut Avenue measuring point. This heightened density would include the housing bonus known as the "create by right" density bonus for affordable housing in this mix. We know that residential penthouses will indeed be added. Outdoor public spaces get direct and adequate sunlight for the citizens and the growth of vegetation. Aspects like these, too numerous to state here. We must build in these safeguards because this body has already chosen to discredit the citizens who participated in the civic process of the survey as well as the results. They have in the past discredited legitimate public testimony. In the absence of community respect, safeguards must be put in place. In the absence of trust, voting in the next election should be paramount for citizens who care about this community. Thank you.
And I'm gonna go to online Kathleen Burke.
Hi, everyone. It's Catherine or Katie Burke. I actually just wanted to raise some concerns about the survey. Having looked at the, the survey results on the website, I, you know, the people who responded, over ninety-one percent of them own their homes, over eighty-four percent live in a single-family home, over fifty-five percent are over fifty-six years old. I don't think this survey represents our community. It, it certainly doesn't represent me and a lot of my neighbors. I live, you know, in, in the Chevy Chase area, and I have concerns that, that presenting this survey as the prevailing view of everyone in this community is not accurate. I support the development of affordable housing over the community center. I think it's, you know, we live in an amazing community, and others deserve to benefit from this community as well. We would benefit from the increased diversity in our community. It would bring new life, new interest. I don't believe it will destroy property values. I don't believe it will destroy the fiber of the community. And I, I just don't think that that survey represents who we are, circling the wagons to protect our privilege.
Thank you. I'm gonna take one, okay, go on. And can you please speak up? People online are having trouble hearing.
Sure, I'll do my best. Told that I have a soft voice, but I'll try harder.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try harder. First of all, I want to say, my prepared comments were predicated on, not on Commissioner Goslin's new effort. And it is mind-boggling to me that we are expected to absorb what must be two or three pages of narratives. I, you can shake your head, but there are a lot of people in this room who agree that we should have a written version of your new resolution to look at and see what the commission is voting on. And it, I don't know whether your fellow commissioners know what they would be voting on, because it's just all out in verbal ether. So having said that, I, along with sixty percent of respondents to your ANC survey, oppose housing on the commons. I do not oppose affordable housing in Chevy Chase. The community has made it abundantly clear that it favors building truly affordable housing elsewhere in Chevy Chase, just not on the commons. The city should do what it promised the community in twenty nineteen, renovate the library and the community center. The commons is not suitable for any housing, no matter what the proponents of this scheme wish to believe. ... of surplusing air rights, because it cannot surplus the building or the land to turn the commons over to developers and to run roughshod over Chevy Chase. Moreover, and alarmingly, DC has been busy virtually giving away public land to developers and plans, if unchecked, to do that with the commons. Developer giveaways should not be allowed to continue. We need to fight back. You need to fight back. We should all be very concerned about what these giveaways mean, not only to Chevy Chase, but to the city as a whole. Indeed, a young mother who lives in Ward Eight despondently told me last week that she believes the city is in the pocket of developers. That comment should not be lost on Ward Three. Do not split the ANC's resolution into two parts. The community sees this for what it is, a transparent attempt to undercut the survey results and defeat the wishes of the community. Do not weaken the survey results either tonight or at your proposed Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting, which I encourage everyone here and online to attend. I truly hope you, our elected commissioners, will honor the wishes of the sixty percent majority of survey responders and oppose surplusing the commons and putting luxury or market-rate housing on the site. You are supposed to transmit the wishes of your community, not your own. Please vote for Commissioner Bruce Sherman's resolution as drafted, so the Chevy Chase community can have meaningful input into its future. Because it is related to the attempt to defeat the community's wishes, I would also like to comment briefly. Can I just finish my paragraph?
Yeah, can you wrap it up?
Thank you. Yeah, to comment briefly on Commissioner, sorry, Councilmember Freeman's no apartments covenant legislation. It affects the property rights of many residents and is, I believe, deceptively cast as a ban on racial covenants, which are already void and unenforceable. There is no need for legislation on that point, and his legislation probably will not pass constitutional muster. Clearly, Councilmember Freeman's legislation is aimed at something else, smoothing the. Not support his legislation. Developers have other recourse, and I would like to give you a.
Thank you. And if other people have copies, if you want to give them to me, I'll put them on the, on the record on the ANC website.
Okay, am I close enough? My name is Catherine Curly. I live in the thirty-nine-hundred block of Legation Street, where I've lived for ten years, and I have two children at Lafayette. We plan on staying in this neighborhood for a long time. I'm here tonight because voices like mine have not been heard, voices of younger adults who support redevelopment of the civic core, voices of hard-working professionals who want Chevy Chase accessible to all, voices of busy parents who forgot to take the online survey. The results of that survey represent a narrow sliver of our neighborhood with equally narrow views. So look beyond the yays and the nays of that survey. Seek out more voices like mine who have not been heard. Round out the voice, the voices of the naysayers who will do anything to keep us moored in our shameful past. And welcome the voices of those not yet in our community, because they cannot afford housing here.
Thank you.
Hi, Cheryl Barnes, Chevy Chase Voice. And I have comments about the survey and the covenants. Should I give both of those now, or should, are we just focusing on the survey?
It's up to you. You have three minutes on this one.
The ANC survey made these points abundantly clear. Commissioners, respect the results of the survey. Stop undermining the community. The survey made these points unanimously. Housing is incompatible with the current use of the Chevy Chase Commons. The Chevy Chase Commons Park, Library, and Community Center are public and must remain so in perpetuity for all residents, for all DC residents, a hundred percent every inch of it. No upzoning. Residents do not want an eighty-foot building on sixty percent of this lot. The third point, keep it public. It should not go to a private developer. And then on the covenants, issues with respect to the covenant, and a question and a statement. The question is, who asked the writers of the memo, Feldman, Schmidt, and Rome, to write that legal memo on strategies to overturn the covenant on the Chevy Chase Commons? to write that legal memo on strategies to overturn the covenant on the Chevy Chase Commons? And which ANC three, four G posted on its public website? Were those people paid for it and if they were, by whom? Chevy Chase Voice thinks that the ANC owes the community an explanation as to why this memo came out of an ANC subcommittee and landed on a public DC government website. Open question. Last point, land use covenants are legally enforceable, whereas racial exclusionary covenants are not. The No Apartment Covenant is a land use covenant. Removing this land use covenant will have the same injurious effect on surrounding property owners that it was put in place to protect. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you go, Gary, I'm gonna go online Marty Renn.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner Gore. I appreciate you all for all the efforts you've put into this. And my understanding of the the motion is just that you all want to forward the unadulterated survey results. And if that's correct, I'm in favor of that, and I hope that they'll be interpreted as such. Just the voices of the people who were able to and chose to respond. And I look forward to the next meeting where you all will represent us. It's a representative democracy. It's not our survey democracy. And I hope that you represent us well as you have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Gary Thompson. I live on Northampton Street. I was an ANC commissioner for eight years, so I wanted to start, most importantly, by thanking all of the commissioners. And I think this is sometimes lost in in meetings like this. Just just to restate the obvious, this is volunteer time. And I know every single one of these commissioners chose to be on this commission because they love this neighborhood and they believe in this neighborhood. And whatever their positions are on this particular issue or any other, their their goals are laudable. They're sincere. So I mean, the only thing to express to our commissioners is gratitude, I think. Even if you respectfully disagree with their positions in in some degree. So thank you. So I thought it might be helpful to share an experience. It was a long time ago, two thousand and seven, I was a new commissioner. And it was a really hot issue at the time. A motion was on the table to create a historic district for, you know, the same area that's recently been described. And it my first impression was that seems like a great idea. I love history. I love local history. I love preserving history. I read there's thirty seven historic districts. I thought, well, okay, that seems fabulous. And I thought that a lot of the points made about the bureaucracy involved were overstated. And, you know, it's just not something to worry about. In the long run, it would be better. But I was patient and pretty quiet. Our chair at the time, Jerry Levine, who was a fabulous chair of this commission, by the way. He led a survey because it became clear that a lot of people were opposed. But it was unclear what the balance was. So we did the best we could at the time with mail. We didn't have online surveys and that sort of thing. I think Chris Van Bolluie played a role in that, but the survey was mailed. It wasn't perfect, but it was pretty reliable and the results came back. And I think it was something like sixty or sixty-five percent against the creation of the historic district. So and I share this experience because it stopped me in my tracks and I thought, well, you know, if the people in the district, the proposed district, don't want this designation, who am I to vote that there should be one? So I changed my vote. I changed my position. I thought, well, I could I could stand up and say, well, I have a broader vision. I can see longer into the future. I think it's better. But I felt compelled nevertheless to vote against the designation. I think the vote was four to three or maybe five to two. I can't remember. It was really close. But I thought that was very relevant to what maybe some of you are thinking about presently with respect to the the survey. Not perfect, but nevertheless, it clearly reflects a a majority sentiment in the neighborhood that that you may or may not want to defer to. Thank you.
My next, can you hear me? Okay, I'm Ron Khan. I live on Livingston, right off of Connecticut Avenue. And I have a quick question for the commission. This won't take long. This assumes you're going to be voting on some aspect of content related to to the resolution. So my question is, what score associated with a housing or non-housing survey question would cause each commissioner to take a different position? Yes, no, or abstain? Would it be ninety-nine to one or what? What would cause you to change your mind, your present mind related to your position on this resolution? Can you speak to that?
Let me just interject. I don't want to use up your three minutes by having seven commissioners. Okay, so I'm not going to answer that question, but I'm just saying if we all answer that question, we're going to go beyond three minutes and we have to get through speakers behind you and speakers online. So I'm just letting you know. Other commissioners can answer, but I want to reserve the time for the community.
Yeah.
If a majority of my constituents were supportive of the redevelopment, would vote for redevelopment?
Ron, thank you for the question. And to be honest, I'm not exactly sure how to answer it. But I will say that I grew up in this neighborhood and the sense that I get when I was out campaigning, the sense that I get and that I know from the people that I grew up with is that this is not a community that wants to reject affordable housing. This is not a community that wants to reject others. There may be those pockets and we reject that viewpoint. But I think that is the general view of how the sentiment of the community should be viewed in that light that most people here have goodwill towards others.
I just say I I want to associate myself with Peter's statement. I I get you to attempt at an explanation on the listserv and to my fellow commissioners and ZDD members. I think there are two arguments for the approach that I'm going to advocate Monday, which is one is that we're a generous community and so accepting some housing with as long as it is done addressing the other concerns of the community about size and so on. Is the right way to go to show that generosity, but it's also the right way to go to protect the community as best we can from the city so that I don't think there's a number that I over the last three years as commissioner, I've been asked questions where they're always answering yes or no. Or in this case, give me a number and I just I too complex an issue. So but I think it's a generous community, as Peter said. And I think it's also a smart thing to do to protect the community. So.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your input. I understand your positions. I would encourage later on, as we get more definitive information on what's going to go here, more closer to after RFP, maybe look at another survey where we have a lot more information to base our decisions on than now. That's just a preference I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Better? Can you hear me now? Good evening. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Christina Flebs. I live essentially at Thirtyth and Nebraska, which is actually in Ward Four. Let me start by saying I do thank you for your service. Volunteer work is hard and time consuming and obviously thankless often. But I have to say, and thank you, Commissioner Lynch, I am a little procedurally confused. My understanding is that what is before us now is simply a resolution transmitting survey results. Okay, great. Then I'd like to speak just to the resolution itself. It seems to me that the portion of Commissioner Sherman's resolution that simply stated the strongest findings of the survey, sixty percent opposed to the DEMPAD plan. And thank you, Commissioner Lynch. I agree with you. This is a generous community. I have lived here thirty five years. I know my neighbors. We are not against affordable housing. We are simply concerned about this site. So again, back to Commissioner Sherman's small paragraph. Sixty percent against the DEMPAD plan. Sixty-two percent against the methodology of surpassing. And seventy percent, seventy percent against building heights exceeding sixty feet, which, by the way, is only five feet more than the fifty-five feet in current zoning. That, I believe, should be front and center in the transmission of the resolution and all of the more nuanced results following. That is what I would like to see at this stage of the process. And I also am very grateful for the former commissioner who just spoke, pointing out the need for you guys to represent the views of your community. Thank you.
I also support the transmittal of the survey without the ANC's overlay to the to the to DEMPAD. And I would ask that I prefer the language that the previous speaker referred to in Council, sorry, Commissioner Sherman's resolution because it's straightforward. What I don't understand is why in Commissioner Goslin's narrative, he presents the minority view first in each case. The majority view is normally presented first. And the most the most essential thing you can do when you convey the results of the survey is to request that DEMPAD respond to the survey. That's the only way the results will be noticed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christopher Vaden. I've lived in this neighborhood for twenty-eight years. But I've only lived in this ANC for a year. It's not that I moved, it's that the ANC boundary moved. And I think that makes me especially sensitive, the issue of using arbitrary boundaries to define who's a member of this community and who's not. There are plenty of people who use this library and community center who who shop in our in our stores and eat in our restaurants, but they live in three E or three F or Chevy Chase, Maryland. I think they're part of our community too, not just the people who live within the arbitrary boundary of of the ANC. The first speaker mentioned his children and wanting to leave something to his children. My sons grew up here. We spent many hours in the children's room upstairs at the library. They got their shoes at Raymer, at Raymer's, their haircuts at Salon Familia, their birthday presents for friends at child's play. They've grown up to be fine young men and they're gainfully employed. But there's very little chance they will ever be able to afford their own home here in Chevy Chase. That's part of a much larger problem that we need to help address. Our neighborhood is being asked to be a very small part of the solution to a very big problem. It's a privilege to live here in Chevy Chase. Hoarding that privilege is doing our children and our larger community a disservice. Let's be part of the solution, not a part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Matt Osolinski, thirty-one years, but who's counting? I have not spoken out publicly on this at all, in part because I just got into it in the last several months and have only been to a couple of meetings virtually and in person. And in part because during those meetings, I've seen what it's done to people. And I didn't want that to happen to me. I've seen on my Twitter feed these last meetings being compared to school board meetings, raucous tea party meetings, and I'm really interested in this one. Pool closing meetings in the sixties and fifties. So I didn't want to like start my retirement. I'm about to retire. I didn't want to start my retirement thinking about testifying here to this, but I feel like it's my citizenship that's called into question and I want to participate. Regarding survey, there's been a lot said about the way the survey was was structured and the way the the results have been evaluated or presented. And I find that the manner in which things are introduced has a lot to do with how we perceive them. And regarding the survey, I was one of twenty-five people who evaluated. And there were twenty-five sets of comments and the survey got put out virtually verbatim to how it was given to us to comment on. One of my comments was that the the way it was introduced, a full page introduction for people like me who were not fully familiar with what was going on, presented it as an affordable housing project. The words library, the words community center, were not even in that presentation. The words anything other other type of housing were not even in that presentation. I pointed this out. I didn't expect to be listened to. Sorry. This is the first time that I've said anything. I'd appreciate a little leniency. The the other thing that struck me was that when I opened up the newsletter from Jerry Mallett's, I looked at it and I'm like, oh, this isn't, I'm in favor. Isn't that bad for people in favor? I was surprised when I opened up the ANC charts and it's like, oh, this is against. It's as if there are two, it's as if there's a, is it gold and is it white? Is it black? Is it blue dress?
Sir, can you wrap up? Your time has expired.
I'm in I'm in favor of submitting the responses on the survey. But I think we need to take into consideration the demographics, the overwhelming demographics of age group of homeowners versus the age group and homeowners that are here. We have the ability to do that. Not maybe in this ANC, but or maybe we don't have the interest in attending.
Yeah, Commissioner. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you for contributing.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening and and thank you for hearing us. I'm Kevin Malshine. I'm a resident for forty-two years of the neighborhood. First in the Garfield Building, now on Canalway Street. And I hear everybody talking about supporting affordable housing, but I I have to respectfully say that it's a cop out to say that you support affordable housing, but you don't. You're not in favor of how to affordably build affordable housing. And the only way to affordably build affordable housing is to use land that cannot, it does not have to be purchased because we all know, we live in a neighborhood where land is dear. I mean, it's it's so expensive to build affordable housing to begin with. If you have to buy the land, you're you're not going to succeed in in building a sustainable project. And and I have to say that for those who say they afford, support affordable housing, but don't support this. It's very much like I've heard about increasing taxes. People say, don't tax you, don't tax me, tax the man behind the tree. But when the opportunities to build affordable housing affordably again come up, we have to take a hold of that. And I'm all in favor and and very much support improving the library, improving the community center and building affordable housing. And I think we can do all of achieve all of those goals. And I think we can do all of, achieve all of those goals on this site. And there are other public sites where I think we should look at to see where else we can build affordable housing. But in each case, you're going to have people standing forward and saying, no, not there. Build it somewhere else that's like in, in Montgomery County. There was a neighbor in Silver Spring who said, don't build, I'm all in favor of affordable housing. Don't put it in Silver Spring, put it in White Oak. And it just doesn't work that way. I mean, you, we need to, to welcome people within our neighborhood. And, and I think we need to be consistent and say, we're going to affordably build this affordable housing and do it on the civic core. Thank you.
Thank you. And Steve, before you speak, the gentleman behind you will have to be the last speaker. We're at seven eighteen.
I must be living right then. So, well, he's living better than me. So I happen to live outside of this ANC, but I live a whole lot closer to the civic core than does a large swath of, well, let's take Mr. Sherman's district. Virtually every single person who voted and sixteen percent of the folks who responded to the survey live closer than I do. Yet my vote, my neighbors' votes and the like have been discounted in the transmittal that's being, that's going directly to the city. The sixty, forty split, yeah, that's a split. It's based on this ANC, it's based on the people who responded. So let's just use, since Mr. Kane used a rhetorical device, let's use a fun rhetorical device here. How many people in this room are renters? Renters, how many rent your home? So we've got one, two, three folks who have rent, okay? How many respondents to our survey? So we've got mostly single family homes, right? The majority of people who have responded to the survey are single family homeowners. We have twenty-five, excuse me.
Please don't interrupt.
We have twenty-five percent of the folks who live in apartments in this district. To be frank, Peter Lynch, that's your district. Zach, that's your district. I can't imagine that you would vote on something that needs to be transmitted that hasn't spoken to the people that you represent. It's just unconscionable that you would even vote on this as a transmittal. So I just, it, it boggles my mind. So what more should I say about that? You guys haven't given us the data. Mr. Schmidt asked for the data last week. Impossibler to give Mr. Schmidt the data. Oh, you've given that to him? Okay. And we've been able to parse it. But as far as this transmittal goes, as far as saying that this is what this community said, you hardly got responses from this community. And you ought to be ashamed if you're going to vote in favor of that without really, and saying that this is the conscience of my community. It's not the conscience of your community. It's the conscience of the people you got to respond. Thank you.
This will be the last speaker. Please, can we come back to order? This will be the last speaker.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Gordon. I live on McKinley Place. The only, the things that I want, the thing that I want to talk about or mention in my testimony today is I came here when the first presentation was made. And when the presentation was made in this room, it was said, we had a number of speakers and they said, we're so far away from a final decision, but this is what we're thinking about. And we heard someone from the library, we heard someone from the, the Public Recs Department. They said what they talked about on different places. And then they said, well, tell us what you like and put, you know, mark around the room and all that. Then there was another meeting the following Wednesday that was supposed to recoup the meeting. When they, when we first got back together, they, they asked for a show of hands where, who was at Saturday's meeting? And the room was ninety percent people that were not in Saturday's meeting. So now the survey went out and it seems to me that we're speaking tonight of something very factual, but I, I think it's questionable that the survey is not really that accurate. And I guess that's the point I really want to make. And when the, when a proposal can come out that shows what people are actually thinking of actually doing with the property, what the, the rec department would look like, what the library would look like, if there's going to be housing, what that would look like, that planning would be a good piece to review. But at this point, it's so up in the air, I just, I, I find it, I find the survey circumspect. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who gave us feedback. We're now going to let the commissioners have an open discussion about the resolution. So before we do that, Peter, I'm going to ask that you move your resolution in. We will have a discussion until seven fifty. Commissioners, we need to also do our due diligence and have our vote on this by seven fifty so we can get out on time. But first, Peter, could please put the motion on the floor?
So I move that the commission take up and vote on the resolution conveying results of its community center library survey to district decision makers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we'll have discussion. So I know we got a lot of questions on the survey resolution. So we'll start with you, Commissioner Lynch.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just address the, the second speaker from, from the last about apartment renters. One of the reasons I ran on the ANC was because I was involved in the small area plan on the community advisory committee. And something that I repeatedly raised with Erkin, blinking on his last, Orsbyk, sorry, apologize for messing up his last name. But one thing I repeatedly raised with him, with the rest of the CAC, was that renters were just not being communicated with enough. So I, I do think there's issues with the survey. The survey is not perfect, but the argument that renters were not communicated with, every renter got a leaflet in the mail. Not enough renters, as I would have liked, responded. But it is more renters that communicated with this ANC on one particular issue with the civic core than at any other point during the civic core process. So to say now that there wasn't enough renters i- is not accurate. At every step of the process, there had been far fewer communications with renters in apartment buildings.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, actually, I didn't speak at all the last meeting besides my introduction. So I'm going to take a few minutes here, if it's okay, to give my view from single member district of seven. First, you know, so many things make this community special. You know, we probably all have our favorite restaurants, our favorite trees, streets. I think something that can make it really special is if we have a civic forum where people can come and regardless of their views, feel respected. And I think obviously that starts with commissioners, you know, we, we need to set the tone. And so I think everyone who's here, you know, regardless of your view, I think you're here because you care about your community and you want to see what's best for it. And I really respect you all for being engaged in this process and I thank you for your time. And I also really want to thank the survey committee members. So we have Commissioners Sherman, Chair Gore, Commissioners Goslin and Nash, who are on the survey committee. They put, it pains me to think about how many hours they put into the survey. It, and you know, the summer is when ANC's get a little bit of a break. They were busy tirelessly working on the survey and made it possible. So I, I give enormous credit for them. It was a very, there's a lot of compromise, there's a lot of trying to find common ground. So, so thanks to them. So how I view the survey is I'm really excited for the data. I'm really excited about all these responses because in this role, my concern has been, we, we just don't hear from a lot of people. You know, we have people who are working in evenings, they, they can't be here. People with caretaking responsibilities, you know. Fifteen thousand people cannot pile into this room and we can hear from them. So I was really excited to see a broader range of responses. And I have been a little surprised to hear the view emerge that we should only look at who took the survey and not analyze it in any way that could at all factor in a broader view. And that didn't make sense to me for two main reasons. Number one is we asked you a lot of demographic questions and that would be a waste of every survey taker's time if we just had, if that was for no reason. So I think we can use that demographic data to better understand the results. You know, it's not perfect, just like the survey, it's imperfect, but it gives us an idea. Who is overrepresented in the survey? Who is underrepresented? And what are those underrepresented groups telling us in the survey? Again, imperfectly. The second reason I, I want to consider it more broadly is ninety-one percent of my single member district did not take the survey. Ninety-one percent. So to tell me entirely, don't think about their interests at all and vote, that, that doesn't work for me. But again, I'm excited about the nine percent. That's, that's not nothing. That's great. And I can learn from it and I really enjoy digging into the data and learning. And then two last points I'll make and then get back to this matter. One is, you know, anyone can do this job differently than I'm going to do it, but something that's really important to me, when you're dealing with a housing issue in Chevy Chase, is considering the history of racial exclusion and discrimination in this community. I, you know, I just don't know how you can view a housing issue in Chevy Chase and ignore that entirely. So that's something, a choice I make and others cannot, can, can choose differently. Lastly, on resolutions, it's really hard to put pen to paper and write a resolution. It's much easier to sit back and for me to, you know, give notes and feedback. So both Commissioner Sherman and Goslin, thank you so much for giving us something to respond to. And I, I look forward to voting on this one. And I've given friendly amendments. I think we've had a couple of friendly amendments, but I, I appreciate the, the writing of this.
Any other, Commissioner Nash?
Yeah, I, I want to thank Commissioner Goslin for his tireless work in putting this resolution before us. And I want to remind commissioners that the strategy of dividing these resolutions in two aligns with the original purpose of the survey. The original purpose of the survey was twofold. Number one was to allow the community to communicate its views on redevelopment. That is what this resolution will do. It allows us to give the city what the survey takers say. That was the first purpose of the survey. The second purpose of the survey will be taken up in the next resolution at our next meeting. And that will be to try to influence the RFP that the city is going to develop. So the rationale for these resolutions is sound and it aligns with our original purpose on the survey committee. I am more of a survey skeptic than most of my colleagues having worked on the survey committee. It was done by amateurs like myself. We did the best we could, but I think we should take it with a big grain of salt. We already know that certain, that renters and African Americans and young people are underrepresented in the survey. I think they're also underrepresented in many of our meetings as this young lady earlier alluded to. I, I know my neighbors, I have neighbors with young children and they just don't have time to, to, to do this or even take surveys. And young people face a housing problem that's other gentlemen alluded to. I have three sons, none of them could afford to live here and they're all doing the best they can. Young people are facing a real housing crisis and I, I cannot get up in the morning and look in the mirror without trying to do something about it. But, so the survey under represents important groups that are more in favor of housing than old white homeowners like me. Okay? And so we have to take it with a grain of salt. And then finally, this is, the survey is not only not an election, it's not a poll. It's not a scientific poll. Scientific polls come with a margin of error. And have you noticed, there is no margin of error on this, even though scientific polls that do scientific sampling will give you a margin of error of three to five percent. Well, we don't have anything like that here because we don't know what it is. We do know that there is a big margin of error here. It's going to be higher than a scientific survey. I'm going to just pull a number out of the hat and say twenty, twenty-five percent. So to me, when I look at the survey, if I see seventy-five, eighty percent of people want something, I take that very seriously. Numbers under than that, I say, this says we're divided. And I think we are divided in a lot of important issues. I hope we can find a common ground. Okay, with that, I, I, I think I'm going to stop.
Commissioners, Commissioner Sherman?
First of all, it's great to see everybody here tonight. It's great to have so many people online. I think we probably have about a hundred and twenty people or thereabouts in, in this conversation. I want to recognize one of the survey research professionals who guided us in this initiative. Susan Geely is here tonight and I want to thank Susan and commend her for her service. I would also want to recognize Steve Connors, who happens to be in Sibley Hospital tonight. He is one of Lisa's constituents. He was also one of the experts who guided us in this effort. We all wish him well. I was in touch with him this afternoon. And the third professional researcher who guided us is Anna Dean. These are all constituents in ANC three, four G. They donated their time, volunteered their time to help us. It was a volunteer effort. We're a volunteer organization, but we did have professional survey research expertise guiding us. So it's important for everybody to understand that. A couple of things, just by way of context, we've said these before, but given the nature of the conversation, I think they bear repeating. And that is that a survey of this nature is by definition not representative of the population. It was structured as a volunteer survey. We did not create this as a probability sample whereby we would draw up based on the statistics, the demographics of the neighborhood, a sample that would then represent statistically the community. And we would then send interviewers out to find those people to collect what then could be a statistically valid sample. There are many reasons we didn't do that. It's expensive, it takes a lot of time. But the other reason is that we saw this and we see this as a community engagement exercise in its own right. This is an opportunity for everybody in the community to voice their views, to have their say. And it's, it's much like, it's much like this occasion tonight. You come voluntarily. It was much like the sessions with DEMPED on October fourteenth and eighteenth. There were three hundred and fifty or four hundred people that came and participated in those sessions. Voluntary activity. Everything we do here is voluntary. So a survey like this that opens up the opportunity for everybody to participate is by nature going to be voluntary and it's going to have a self-selection bias in it. Some people are going to take the survey, other people are not going to take the survey. The critical question was, and Commissioner Lynch addressed this, was everybody advised? Was everybody informed about the opportunity to take the survey? And I commend Commissioner Gore, Commissioner Goslin, Commissioner Nash on the survey committee, their efforts to get that mailer out to everybody. That was a Herculean effort. And in addition to that, we posted notices on the listserv, Chevy Chase chatter, other social media. And commissioners then went out and talked to residents themselves. In my single member district, my wife Jane, who's in the audience tonight, and I, on the day before the survey closed, we had a collection of surplus mailers. We had five hundred of them. So we dropped another five hundred mailers at people's doorsteps. And I was monitoring in real time the survey results coming in. And we received another hundred responses because of that further outreach. We had five hundred people in my single member district, nearly thirty percent of the adults and probably forty percent or so of the households because I was told by a number of people that certain households submitted one survey. If there was a couple, husband and wife got together and did the survey together. So we had an extraordinarily high response rate. Now, I also recognize, as I've told my constituents, I do a weekly newsletter. Jeff knows that, he receives it, his wife Beth receives that. Jeff and Beth wrote to me about a week ago and they asked me, they said, Commissioner Sherman or Bruce, thank you very much for the, for the survey work. We want to remind you that we support the development and we want to ask if you will continue to represent us because we support the development, even though a majority, and I'd already published the distant. Even though a majority, and I'd already published the statistics, the data on our single-member district. And I said, of course I will. So Jeff, I represent you. I represent Beth. We will talk about my resolution on Monday, but it is crafted around the idea that we can try to bring the different sides of this discussion and this challenge together in the search of affordable housing in Chevy Chase. But I just want to let everybody know that the survey has its limitations. And yet, when you have twenty-eight-hundred and thirty-six people in total, twenty-three-hundred from our ANC take this survey, this is, as I said before, by orders of magnitude, larger, richer than anything ever done in the history of this ANC. Including, and I and I and I say that again in all of its richness, including those who support the city's proposals. It gives us that amount of information to go on. So I believe it is an extraordinary body of data with all of its flaws. It is what it is. It's no more than it is. But it is an incredible data set that we all can benefit from and learn from. And again, we'll talk about the, I'm happy to answer any questions on the methodology. If anyone has concerns, people have raised these concerns tonight. They're all valid. They're all legitimate. Susan's here as well. I asked her to come in case something more technical came up that she might be able to help out on. Again, I want to thank her. But I'm open for any questions, Commissioner Gore. I think I know we all are in terms of how this survey was put together. Right? Thank you.
Commissioners Zeldin.
Yes, I want to say that I have sent comments to Peter Goslin on the transmittal motion. Peter, I know you have them. I know you've been working tirelessly, having been up all night and having been at the community center at three-thirty this afternoon to set up the technology, and you may not have been able to incorporate all of them into your resolution. However, I think what I say that's most important to me in the resolution, besides correcting some of the numbers, like sixty, forty is not an actual number. It's closer to forty-seven, forty. But what is most important to me is something which I wrote, which it says that it is important to note that the survey is just one of many data points that the commission considered in making its recommendations, which it will consider making its recommendations with the forthcoming follow-on resolution. I think that this survey, while it has flaws and it is also very important, has to be understood to be a data point of a multi-year process that this commission has been going through. And to prioritize it, to say that it is the definitive statement of the view of this community is just a misrepresentation of what we have been learning over this multi-year process. And so while I favor submitting the raw data to the city to to analyze, it cannot be fashioned that this is the voice of the community. It is just one of multiple data points. That's what I want to say.
Do you want to address that before I speak?
Yeah, I think I think that Commissioners Eldon is proposing a friendly amendment. And it seems to me that it's an interpret, it is part of the assessment and therefore would help us figure out how, what recommendations we draw from this. So it seems more appropriate to bring this up Monday. Michael, with regard to your other edits, I, you know, I they just came really late. I understand that my documents came really late too, but I just, you know, that's that I that's the problem. I got Zach's, I got Jim's. So in any case.
Commissioner Gore, just one other, to respond to Michael, if I could just briefly. I want to reiterate. We are not saying it's a referendum. We're not saying it's the definitive view of the community. We are not overstating the scope of the results. We're simply conveying to the community what the community has said to us.
But Bruce, if I may, when it's conveyed as a standalone and it says, this is the view of the community, it creates a misrepresentation of what the view of the community is, which is why I say in the friendly amendment I gave to Peter Goslin, that it is just one data point, not a definitive statement of the community's interest. Most of the speakers who are speaking against affordable housing are speaking about this survey as if it is the beginning and ending of the whole conversation. The community has spoken. Forty-seven to forty oppose affordable housing with nine percent. Not really giving us an answer that's analyzable, because they were never asked if there was to be affordable, if there was to be development. You say you want no development. If there was to be development, would you oppose or support affordable housing? That nine percent was never inquired of in that way. So you had a forty-seven, forty split, not a sixty, forty percent split. And as I say, if it's presented as here it is, the definitive work of the survey committee and the definitive voice of our community, it misrepresents what we have been doing for multiple years. And so it has to be put in the context of all the other things that the commission has been doing. Have we lost audio, Lisa? If people are speaking, I, Michael Zeldin, cannot hear you.
Mine, it's still recording. Okay. So we might have two, we might have two recordings on this. But, um, you know, we've had some really tough topics, including this, Maray. So it's been very controversial. The new commissioners that are on the commission now, and the majority of them are new, have come into, I thought my commission came into some really tough stuff. You guys have come into some fire. So thank you all for hanging in there with us and not running out the door. And then I just kind of also want to explain, because the ANC has gotten a lot of emails about what we should do with the survey results. And some of you might remember in the beginning, I was not in favor of doing a survey. I had to take some convincing to do that. And the more I talked, the more I thought it was the right thing to do, to give this community a voice. I was readily going to accept the results of the survey, and I still do. But I do want to explain and just kind of talk about from a commissioner's standpoint, what we do or what I, as a commissioner, representing single-member district zero-one takes into account. And I recently had an email where somebody felt that I was discarding the views of the majority in terms of the survey. And I want to reassure you all, that's not the case. I've listened and I've walked my community. Many of you guys that know me, you see me walking down Western Avenue. I've talked to a lot of people in the community, going to your house. People have come to my house. I've met people at Bread and Chocolate. I've had three years probably worth of conversations on this subject. I will continue to do that, multiple, probably hundreds, maybe I can't tell you how many emails. I checked the ANC survey feedback form before I came here tonight. We have over fifty survey feedback forms just relating to this one topic. I've read every last one of them. A lot of you all attached documents to those feedback forms. I read every last one. We've had meetings. We've had conversations with our council members. We've had information exchanges, which are, were educational events where we heard from different people in a community. We heard from people that talked to us about development and financing and how you actually build affordable housing. Then all the testimony that we've written on this subject. In writing testimony, we've introduced that testimony at these meetings. We've heard feedback from you all on the testimony and as well as our resolution. So a lot of resolutions on this subject as well. So there is a lot of information that we take into account. I know the survey results in in my ANC and particularly my single-member district. It pretty much reflect the overall survey results. But I also know the other sentiment in terms of how some people feel about affordable housing. And, you know, just to reiterate some of the things that I've said in the community regarding this project, I know there's issues, but I do believe in affordable housing. I do support affordable housing at the site. But your feedback and some of the issues that you all have brought up has also allowed me to see some of the things that we continue, as an ANC, that we continue to need to address. So we're going to do that. This is just the beginning of this particular conversation. We have a long way to go. I also echo Commissioner Goslin's position that right now, we're in a stage where we are getting ready to go through an hour RFP process. The city is not going to hold up on that process. The hour RFP process is going to proceed. When the mayor came here, I asked her to speak at our budget or when she was doing budget, I asked her to come to the community to speak about the budget for this project. At that time, she reaffirmed her commitment to the project and its budget. And when she came, I believe for Chevy Chase Day, she did the same thing. So there's no indication that there's going to be anything other than DEMPED proceeding forward. And the course of action that we are trying to do now is very hard, trying to see where we can come up with common ground and represent some of the concerns that you all have on the project. So I think that's a best way forward for the ANC. I hope that you guys understand, but and realistically, I know that some of you all are, you know, probably not going to like our decisions, and that's okay, too. I'm comfortable with that as well. But I do want you to understand where I'm coming from on this, and I've kind of reserved that until this point in time. So with that, Commissioner Goslin, my only question on the resolution is just to make sure, and I just kind of whispered to you, that the survey results that are reflected, and this was a change that I asked Commissioner Goslin to do, because one of the things that we keep saying is sixty, forty. I asked Commissioner Goslin to actually amend that in the resolution with the friendly amendment to show the five categories, which are, I support the proposed redevelopment with housing. I support only redevelopment of the community center and library. I do not support any redevelopment of the site. I don't feel sufficiently informed and I have no preference to accurately reflect the responses to that, to actually show the distribution. Because when we say sixty, forty, we're lumping a lot of things together that really should not be together. Because there are a couple of people, there's about three percent of the respondents said they don't feel sufficiently informed. So that's not a yes nor a no. That's them saying, I don't have all the information to make a decision. Yes. And the other thing that I, you know, talked to Commissioner Goslin too, is we have, if you look at the first two categories, I support the proposed redevelopment to include housing, affordable housing, and I support only redevelopment. Those first two categories, if you're just talking about the redevelopment, there's eighty-six percent of the community that's saying they would want some type of redevelopment. The issue is what that redevelopment looks like in the housing component. So I'm choosing to kind of look at the survey that way. And if we look at it that way, it's eighty-six percent of people in this community that are saying they support redevelopment. It's what that redevelopment looks like. So I asked Commissioner Goslin to amend the resolution to reflect those categories.
You want me to do it?
Let's go to Commissioner Lynch.
Which is the point on the resolution that you're referring to right now? If you could direct.
Question nine.
Question nine. Thank you.
Peter, the, the, on the resolution, it's paragraph twelve where I, where I do this, but where I lay out the results. But but it's the survey, it's survey question nine that she's talking about. That she's asking me to put in the full. Can I just, addressing Chair Gore's points? I personally, as an individual commissioner, believe this survey results is a credible reflection of current sentiment in this community. And I personally think it kind of breaks down to sixty, forty. But I have, I understand what Chair Gore is saying, and I want to just say, I have, for the, what I consider, what I, what I think are the big three issues, they're really sort of big four, big five. But so the survey, so the conveyance was not endlessly long. I've laid out for for affordable housing, any housing or affordable housing, the question nine, surplusing question ten and height question sixteen. I've laid out both all the responses for all survey takers and all the response, the results for just ANC survey takers. And to address Andrea Rosen's point, which I would just say as an aside, is one of the examples of the kind of I just don't think you give us credit for trying to be fair, the notion that, yes, it does say at the top, because it was, I'm just laying it out the way the survey results were laid out, that support for the proposal with housing and affordable housing is the first of these. But the numbers are there, they're all in bold. And the, and the link to the full results are in the survey and on our site. So I hope that you go to a vote.
Okay, any Commissioner Zeldin?
The one, the one other friendly amendment, Peter, that I made and which piggyback on one of the comments, one of the community members spoke to is in your recitation of the data, paragraph eleven in your resolution, I removed the distinction between all respondents and ANC specific respondents, because as that speaker said, and I agree, this community center is not ANC specific. It is a more broad community gathering place. You can't tell me that people who live at Politics and Pros South in that area don't use the community center or just across the way in Chevy Chase. And so I think that it's an artificial distinction. The numbers don't change very much, but I think we have to think of our community not as ANC specific in this case, but rather a broader sense of or broader definition of community to include surrounding neighbors that use this facility equal to, if not greater than, in some cases, those who are technically within the ANC but live, say, on Oregon Avenue versus just south of Nevada. So that's why I've asked you, Peter, to just give the numbers from the community respondents and not break out ANC, because I think that that's unnecessary, and I think it's divisive.
I don't, I don't accept that as a friendly amendment. I mean, I think it's reasonable to break it out. We, we, we asked the question whether you were in the ANC or not. As we've said before, you know, as Commissioner Ferguson asked us to put in, you know, we, we have been using the demographic data to, to try to look at a variety of issues. One of those is who is in the community proper and who is out. But to Steve Selig's point, the results, including people out of the the ANC community proper are in this survey. And of course, all the results are available on the ANC website. And this survey, this resolution links to them.
Okay, Commissioner Lynch.
Yeah, I, I get the sense that there's a little bit of editorializing going on here in framing the survey results. Don't we have a simple way to present the survey results to whoever gets the RFP? So that they can analyze it and so, uh, uh, I'm asking for o- other people's benefits and my own. Why the debate and the discussion around tweak, tweaking language and so on and so forth? Can we just say, here are the survey results? Anybody that bids on the RF page, RFP should analyze them, uh, understand them, take them into full account, which I believe the resolve section says.
Yeah.
So could, could someone explain why we are tweaking the language and seeming to be debating about framing this?
Well, uh, if the proposal is to uh, collapse this survey into one sentence, here are the results. I think, I think actually that's a mistake. I think to respect the process, to at least get, I mean, we're gonna send this to uh, you know, the mayor's office, uh, DEMPED, OP, council members, giving, giving them a top liner, which I is neutral. I mean, it's, you know, it is the, it is the results from these three things. I, 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 I think it's, I, I would propose that we keep the, the neutral top line information, but at, right before we present that, uh, the, we say, here's the link to all of it. So, I mean, it's, it's a paragraph, um, paragraph eight, before you get to anything about who the respondents were, paragraph eleven, some of what the respondents said, paragraph twelve, or any of the resolve. And then again, in the resolve, we, we can, uh, we link to the.
Can you read the resolve again?
The resolve is, um, the commission conveys the survey results to district decision makers. Paragraph thirteen, paragraph fourteen, the commission asks the decision makers with the office of the mayor, DEMPED and OP, review the results and additional material, if any, that is, that it posts on the survey results page on its website here, and there's a hyperlink. And finally, paragraph fifteen, the commission asks DEMPED to include the full results in the request for proposal for the community center library site that the agency is expected to issue shortly and to provide the results to any potential bidder responding to the RFP.
So one question for that, I thought, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lynch, go on.
Well, uh, one thing to raise to, to folks that, that may not be aware or may not have looked through the survey results. People that were for and against have a lot of interesting ideas in the comment section that any uh, person bidding on this property would be very interested, I think.
Yeah.
To see. I wonder if we should include language that compels whoever bids on the property or whoever gets uh, a potential RFP to uh, look at those suggestions, because there are quite a few that are really interesting, some of which I hadn't thought about up until this point. Uh, so I think making sure that that is accounted for.
Right, and that was actually your, we're right there. So I was gonna ask, that language, I thought we had discussed linking to the entire body of, uh, okay, but is, maybe we should just clarify that third bullet point to include what Commissioner Lynch mentioned, the um, written comments as well as the other uh,
I'm fine with that. If you wanna, if you wanna drive home the point, uh, we can say in paragraph eight, you know, here's a link to, you know, all the survey results. And by the way, on the website, under our survey results page, all, all those comments overall and broken down by SMDs is there.
I, I, yeah, I put them there.
Good, alright, good. So they're there, so we can, we can point it out in paragraph eight, we can point it out in paragraph uh, uh, thirteen, and we can point it out in paragraph fifteen.
I, I, I appreciate that, I think that's a good idea. I guess what I'm trying to say is that it's one thing to hand them over with our unbiased analysis, it's another thing to ask whoever bids on the property to make sure that you have read through this and do your own analysis. I don't know if that is an assured thing, and I hope we could craft language in the resolve section that makes it, makes it a sure thing that whoever would bid on this property must look through those responses.
Well, I don't think we have a lot of capacity to compel, but I mean, I'm happy to put in language that says we ask that. Um, I'll, how about adding up paragraph sixteen? At first, we asked DEMPED to present it to any bidder, and we ask any bidder or anybody interested in bidding to consider, to, to look at these results, including all of the comments. Does that seem reasonable?
And in the resolve section?
In the, I'm talking about, I'm sorry, the last paragraph of the resolve section. So, so it'd go like this, Peter, you, you'd say, here are all the results. Um, we asked the decision, district decision makers to, to, to review all the results, again, and the hyperlinks to the web, the result page. Um, the commission asked DEMPED to include the full results in the request for proposal and provided the results to any potential bidder on the project. And that's paragraph sixteen, we could add seventeen. The, the commission asked that any potential bidder on the project reviewed all of these results, including the narrative uh, commentary uh, that was given by uh, respondents.
I think that would be a great idea.
Okay.
I, I accept that, it's a.
Okay.
Commissioner Goslin, would you mind just handing you into your paper copy, so I can be sure that I know what I'm voting on here?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I sent it to you about.
No, no, I know, I know, I've, I've got various.
This would be, this would be paragraph sixteen that we just talked about, okay?
In the me. A new paragraph sixteen, is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I just have one, one point of information. Uh, on your survey results page, those are only frequency distributions and the written comments. And I know Zach has about twenty cross tabs.
Mm-hmm. Those, those, those have to go up, too.
And the other point of information, uh, I assume DEMPED, OP, the mayor's office all have paid accounts to Survey Monkey. You can transfer the ability for P, anybody with a paid Survey Monkey account to do their own analysis, their own cross tabs, anything they want, so.
Let me, let me.
Be able to give them that.
Let me ask a question of Commissioner Sherman. We've been talking about this and our big, can we do that? And I mean, the, the two problems with that, one is they have to have paid accounts, because we only paid for three seats. And we, that, even that was wicked expensive. Um, uh, and then, Commissioner Sherman, it, we've talked among ourselves about this issue of IP addresses and not ever disclose.
Privacy.
Personal information, is that a danger if we just basically say, jump on the, on our account?
Well, so we, we have shared the full data set with Jerry, with Zach, uh, with various members of the community who asked for the full data set. And when we shared that data set, we excluded the IP addresses, as we had agreed to do. Um, so, but your question is, if you can repeat it, Jerry, so that I understand what you're asking?
Anybody with a paid Survey Monkey account can be given transfer date, transfer access from you, the owners of this account, so they could analyze the data themselves. Because as you know, Survey Monkey has certain analytic tools that other people don't have. So if they have that, they could do whatever they want with the data.
Right.
If they could look at it in a way that a simple frequency distribution doesn't allow them to, to make certain decisions.
Well, I'd be happy if other commissioners are amenable to adding a sentence to say, we will work with decision makers to, to give them access as long as we're assured that uh,
Privacy protection.
Privacy, privacy is protected.
And one thing about IP addresses, uh, unless somebody is paying for their own personal IP address, everybody's in banks. So if we all have a Comcast account, there's a bank of hundreds of IP addresses that get randomly assigned anytime somebody signs on to the internet. So you don't know who that person is.
Okay, thank you.
Just to, just to speak to that, though, quickly, because we did tell people when they took the survey that their, their participation would be confidential and I, I, I know, I know, and, and you and I have separately talked about it, Jerry. I totally agree, you can't pinpoint where somebody lives with an IP address. But there is some ability geographically to get close to where they live. And I'm just sensitive to the fact that we made this commitment to the community that we wouldn't share. So we're talking about the metadata, and it's a little problematic, but we can, we can address it. I think we can, we can do a workaround.
So, so my suggestion, um, Commissioner Sherman, could I have my text back?
Yeah.
Could I suggest that, and I will clean this up for tomorrow morning, but I'm, so in paragraph fourteen, where we say that we ask decision makers to look at it, we had a sentence that says, I mean, we will work with city agencies to provide them access uh, through Survey Monkey to do their own analyses. Is that reasonable?
We, we, we might be able to do that, but on, yes, we can say that. If we give the, if we give them the full data set, they can do their own analysis anyway. These people have the ability to do analysis on Excel spreadsheets. It's not, we don't have to give that to DEMPED, right? But, but yeah, the short answer is yes, if you want to, it's fine.
Can I ask one question of the six commissioners um, who are not Bruce Sherman? What, what objection do you have to using Commissioner Sherman's resolution to submit the survey results? That hasn't even come up.
Well, uh, the commissioner didn't bring his resolution up.
Well, the commissioner.
Let me just offer one.
The commissioner actually said that we were taking his up on Monday.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, yeah.
You haven't read it?
Yes.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
What do I do at three o'clock in the morning?
And can you just tell us what your objection is to using it?
We are gonna discuss that on Monday. Um, commissioners, we are, we are, excuse me, please don't interrupt. We are at um, about ten minutes past seven fifty, so I'm gonna call for the vote. All those, um, we have a, a motion on the table to accept uh, the resolution by Commissioner um, Goslin as amended. It's been properly seconded. Um, we've had discussion, uh, past our time, and um, so calling for the vote. All those in favor of the um, motion and resolution as amended, please raise your hand. Okay, six.
Zero.
Commissioner Zeldin, are you online?
Yes.
Is your hand up?
It is up.
Okay, seven zero. Resolution passes. Thank you, everyone, for that, and we'll move on promptly to um, Commissioner Goslin's discussion and possible vote on testimony for the um, Frum and Deed covenant legislation language.
Okay, um, let me uh, let me say again that I'm sorry that the community wasn't able to see this, that I didn't get it done uh, in a more timely way. Um, I have prepared draft testimony that I would give as an individual commissioner supporting all three of Commissioner Sherman's bills that would in various ways remove the deed covenant from this property, from other properties along Upper Connecticut Avenue, the Upper Connecticut Avenue Commercial Corridor, and would also provide uh, individual homeowners with a procedure for removing uh, deed covenants from their properties. There are, there are, and you can see it in the testimony, including testimony that Commissioner Ferguson has prepared for a Friday council hearing on council member Frumans bills. Uh, there are a lot of arguments for and against uh, this proposal, and a lot of them revolve around economic and social exclusion from this community and others uh, in the past. On the other side, there are a lot of arguments that the, that the the deed restriction on the rear of this property was not intended as exclusionary. I think there's a, I, I think, and I have written testimony, that I, there is a simpler route to support this, which is that this is, these deed restrictions are a century old, largely unenforceable, but in any case, uh, irrelevant to the current circumstances. Uh, and uh, and in the case of this property, should be removed, because the issues of height, of lot occupancy, these are issues we're gonna have to hash out. We're gonna have to hash them out when the proposals come back from developers. Uh, and I just don't think that it helps anything to have a, a, a century old line drawn right down the back of the um, property. Indeed, um, the, the logic of it would say that you could force the apartment buildings to the front, so they would be taller in the city's view. Uh, but you still could build the back lot, uh, very tall, just not with an apartment building. The deed, the restriction on the uh, on the uh, back of the lot is just for no apartments. Uh, in any case, I'm perfectly happy to do this, to give this uh, uh, testimony on my own. Um, I, the, 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 the A, this ANC has spoken on this issue already on May eighth, it passed a resolution um, calling for the removal of the deed restriction on this property and asking for the city uh, to help us in this. And I believe these measures are the help. Um, one other thing I want to address while we're talking about this, and this goes to a question that, that Cheryl Barnes raised in testimony before. Um, the, the, much of the impetus for uh, council member Frumans, uh, the initial impetus for council member Frumans um, uh, measures came from a, a, a memo that two residents and three, two, both lawyers and, 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 and three lawyers uh, uh, wrote. Uh, uh, Jim Feldman, uh, Greg Schmidt, uh, and a lawyer out of the, I think he's out of the community, Eric Rome, uh, that uh, had a great deal of research in them about kind of the, the covenant here, but on most of the properties along our, our Upper Connecticut Avenue corridor. Um, Cheryl raised the question of who uh, asked these people to do the memo, and were they paid? Uh, the answer is that they, uh, they did the memo on their own as concerned citizens and residents. And let me, I just want to point out another concerned citizen and resident who also did research on this. The first time this community heard about this was because Robert Gordon um, discovered the deed covenant on this property. I didn't retain him to do that. He didn't get paid. He was a concerned citizen and resident, and he did a good deed. Uh, and so I just think that this notion raised by Cheryl and raised by Chevy Chase's voice, that there's something nefarious going on here is wrong. Thank you.
Any community discussion? Yes, go to the mic.
Hi, I'm still Ron Con, I still live on Livingston, okay, for the record. Okay, um, does, I'm gonna speak to the ZDD uh, decision uh, related to assigning, can you hear me all right? Okay, their decide, their decision related to uh, the legal team working. Uh, we, we can talk about, you know, if it was an authorization from the ANC, it was not. There is no evidence on your website, they acted unilaterally. There is no such good, such thing as a good deed. This group was facilitating and directing an extreme set of actions, had nothing to do, nothing to do with the bylaws and the capabilities set forth in the Home Rule Act called the Advisory. This word is advisory, you did anything but advise with this group of three. You suggested legislation, you did deep research, you did strong recommendations. You acted completely outside of your powers to do this, you should not have done that. What the ANC should have done, this is, look at me. What the ANC should have done, as soon as they learned about this uh, covenant, which was really a, a lack of diligence, a lack of diligence in the processes, so with, with the SAP, they should have discovered this, they had years to do this. And you went along, instead of telling the OP, which is what ANC should have done, that they should look into this, and they should act accordingly with whatever resources they want in the DC government, you took on that responsibility and you recommended what was supposed to be done. That's totally inappropriate, that's not according to your responsibilities, it's an invalid request. It should have never happened that way at all, and there is no two ways about it. What is the ANC, what's the first letter stand for? Advisory, you're not advising in any of that. You've gone way overboard, you should have never done that, and that's the point of my testimony. I would not touch anything associated with the Friday meeting with a ten-foot pole if I were the ANC, given their inappropriate role. Let the district officials work with this. This is not an issue that the ANC should have put their thumb on, their finger on, everything else on their foot on. They should have advised and let DC handle this, let the Attorney General handle it. You guys decided to be the judge and the jury on this, that's completely wrong. It has nothing to do with your responsibilities, okay? And uh, you know, as I say, I'm eating at the law. Look at the Home Rule Act and tell me what the responsibilities are of the ANC and get back to me if you want to. But it's clearly outside those bonds. Thank you.
Ron, do you have this argument written down? Because frankly, my question is why? Why, why can't, why can't we, uh, uh, address this issue? We've spent years addressing the issue of what should happen to this property and, uh, 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 the up and down.
You, your job is to advise, not to, not to apply three lawyers. Who knows what their background or what their preferences are on all that whole process? Who knows what that was? Nobody does. You may not know. You may know. Nobody else does. Okay. But that's not the point. You're acting.
Problem with this debate. They're your neighbors. There's nothing nefarious about this.
I'm talking about the responsibilities that you have, you have completely obliterated in terms of the ANC. That should have never been done. Read your responsibilities and get back to me and you will see you're not acting within the responsibilities you never did on this. And I already told you what you should have done. You should have called the Office of Planning and told them what the good citizen told you and relay that information. Let DC handle it appropriately. They have the expertise. You don't. And you took on that responsibility. That was a mistake.
Well, we do know the city has looked at this. I mean, we did talk to, or I talked with OP and, uh, I believe I talked with OAG. So the city is handling it. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just kind of lost on your argument because the ANC did pass a resolution regarding our sentiment of this, but OAG and OP are handling it.
You said, you created a resolution. You didn't ask them, you did not ask ZDD to do this. They came back unilaterally to you and then you passed a resolution that is improper order. Improper order. You, you're supposed to ask them. That's part of your covenant. You ask ZZD what they're supposed to do. You give them guidance. Right? You tell them what to do. This was not a minor matter. You never informed them to do that, yet you took the recommendations and went ahead and did your resolution. That's all inappropriate actions. You're not following your own processes.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
It's the truth.
Okay. I, I, I understand. I hear you. Next.
I'm Christopher Baden again. I'm utterly mystified by that last comment. Any member of this community can submit comments to the ANC. If those members of the community happen to be lawyers and want to put their comments in the form of a legal memo with legal citations and footnotes, they're perfectly entitled to do so. And there's nothing wrong with the, this ANC considering that input, just like it considers everybody else's comments on, on things that concern the neighborhood.
Thank you. Next.
I just want to make one point. I have not dived into this issue at all. Sorry. I just want to make one little point about this and I, I haven't dived into this issue. I remember quickly reading through the memo last spring when it came out. The only thing I want to say, I, I'm a lawyer and I, I write decisions. What, and just, I'm not suggesting anything nefarious, but two of the authors have a strong point of view on the issue. So when I'm writing a decision, I have legal briefs from both sides that I consider. I haven't done a deep dive. It was a very thorough memo, I'll say that. But it is possible that a different lawyer would have drawn some different conclusions. And I remember at the end of their memo, it was very value driven. So that, that's all.
I'm Jim Feldman and I was one of the people who, uh, who wrote, uh, the memo. So I just wanted to make a couple of things. I wanted to take a couple of things clear. First of all, I did not write this for some, for the ANC. I wrote this for anybody who wanted it. It was, I think, posted, uh, on the ANC website and I'm happy to have anybody in the community read it. If there are other lawyers or non-lawyers who disagree with it, I'm happy to hear what the reasons are. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but these are the things that I concluded. I put a lot of work into it. I wrote it for purposes of submitting it to the city government. Because I, and I think my colleagues did also. As citizens of this country and of the city, we felt like it's okay to tell the government what we think and even to use our expertise to draw our conclusions. So that's the total extent of it. And everybody can use it however they want and including the city council, the ANC, or anybody else who's here. And if people think it's wrong, that's also fine if they think the legal conclusions are biased or wrong. I would actually suggest that they always say what is wrong about it because it's, it's, it doesn't actually help much to say, well, they came to a conclusion and it's just, there's something in there that must be wrong. So anyhow, that's my only comment.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where to begin. The three covenants that, uh, govern the back portion of this property. One is that there are no stables in the front yard of any houses, hundred years old. That the property is 15 feet from the, uh, street line. And the final one is that no apartment houses will be built on this property. Even though the law is a hundred years old, uh, clearly the stable, uh, covenant, uh, is moot. The 15-foot, uh, setback has been, uh, adopted by zoning. But the, um, no housing, no apartment housing, uh, covenant still stands. It stands because it has a good purpose. The, uh, Frumman, specific, uh, legislative act with respect to Chevy Chase, uh, names four properties. Uh, this square, this tax square, not just this property, but all of the houses behind it, uh, where the Wells Fargo is, uh, where the Presbyterian Church is and where the Safeway is. Why in the world is, uh, are these properties being discriminated against for the lifting of those very specific, um, that one very specific, um, covenant? A covenant that has not been proven to be in any way racist or segregationist. People posit that the reason that that apartment, um, no apartment house, uh, covenant was put in place is because, um, it wanted to keep poor people out of the neighborhood. And at that time, many of the, um, African-American residents were poor. That's a big stretch. The real reason that the covenant was put in place was to keep this a low-density neighborhood. That's what, and there's much proof around that. There's no reason, unless there's a reason to get rid of that covenant, it should remain. Finally, um, if, uh, the Frumman Act with respect to Chevy Chase is a smart act, a real act, then it would be looking at all of the, uh, properties in Chevy Chase that have that similar covenant. We'd look at all of the, um, uh, covenants across Ward Three. And in fact, there are more, um, similar covenants across the entire city in every single ward so that, um, the Frumman, uh, Act should, uh, should not discriminate strictly against Chevy Chase.
Uh, let me just address that last point. Um, I believe that the third of the bills addresses all of Ward Three. Uh, I, I think that if I understand this correctly, that a Matt, that Councilmember Frumman decided that it would be inappropriate as a new Ward Three council member to address the citywide program right away, the citywide problem right away, but that while one of the bills addresses what homeowners can do and a second one addresses this site in particular, the third addresses covenants on commercial strips in all of Ward Three.
Yes, I, I read all of those acts. The, the first one that you just mentioned, the first one that you just mentioned, uh, is a voluntary, uh, act. It's, it does enforce the issue if, if that, um, if a homeowner finds that there are objectionable, uh, covenants on their property, they can elect to, uh, go to the Recorder of Deeds and have that, um, uh, act amended. So that's the one that's, um, Ward Three wide, but it, it's not like this act that affects these properties because on these properties, he's specifically trying to get rid of the covenant. He's saying, uh, it's a, uh, he's flatly, uh, getting rid of the covenants on these four tax squares. Do you understand the, am I clear on, on the difference?
We're going to have to, um, move on. We're at eight twenty-eight. I want to go to Commissioner, um, Ferguson.
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, I want to clarify a point about, uh, great weight by the, the commission. This is often a point of confusion. It's been for me. It, it's been helpful to look into it. Um, the, the ANC has not always afforded great weight, um, and certainly not before legislation before the DC council. So I don't want anyone to think this is about us, the ANC, using its great weight because the DC council does not give us great weight on our resolutions. Also, even if we pass a resolution unanimously about something in our community, you know, Lafayette, uh, the, the business corridor, that also necessarily wouldn't get great weight. It depends. And, and you know, it's, this is generally, there's different, you know, the utility commission legislation was written a little differently. You have to look at everyone. But generally unsolicited resolutions to the city are not given great weight. There's, there's a role for them. They're allowed. Um, but I think it's just very important to know when we're dealing with our great weight and when we are not. And for the DC council, we are not. And they're having a hearing on Friday and every resident can give those, their views directly to the hearing and to the, the council.
So, so just to be clear on this, Commissioner Goslin, as I think you indicated earlier, you could go ahead and give this testimony. You are prepared to give the testimony. In light of what you just mentioned, we're talking about this for what reason exactly?
I, I'm offering it to the commission, uh, as commission testimony. And, um, I think that we ought to, I ought to move it. We ought to take a vote, but I, I, I understand if you think individual commissioners should, should, should speak.
And if I can speak, I'm, you know, I'm a new commissioner. I've never given, uh, commissioned. Sometimes we do allow, you know, we, we've had our commissioners give their time and, and advocate for the commission priorities before the council, even though it's not given great weight, there's still value to it. And it's a useful dialogue with the, the council. So I certainly can't articulate everything the ANC can do in, in a short time. I was just trying to clarify great weight. Um, so I think I appreciate Goslin's offer. I appreciate what you wrote. I really, I agree, I support it. And we've talked about our commission. We've talked about the covenant on this property and I, I, I appreciate your offer and I think it would be, I, you know, I certainly hear from people who are very concerned about this and, uh, that's why Councilmember Frumman felt it important to bring it before.
And, and could I just say to Commissioner Sherman's question also, the, the, the commission as a whole did vote on this issue of, of this, uh, deed restriction on May eighth and supported a resolution asking for it to be removed. So it, it, I mean, I, I think there's an argument that we should speak as a commission about what turns out, at least at this point, to be the tool to remove it.
Right, right. And again, another point of clarification for the community. And this has been posted at the website. People have seen the testimony. Okay. So it's just another one of these instances though, where we're talking about something, we're taking a vote on it and the members sitting here really don't know what we're talking about. They haven't read your testimony. Um, it's just a matter that I think we need to get squared away.
Let me go to Commissioner, uh, because I, I want to make sure all commissioners have a chance. Commissioner Lynch was trying to get in. And then I'm a, um, call the vote.
I know my constituents on McKinley and Northampton are concerned about height of buildings and the back part of the lot at the Chevy Chase Community Center is the place where they are closest to any potential buildings. And so green space, libraries, communities, uh, community centers would all be allowed in that back 100 feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, and they'd be allowed in the front. The problem, the, I mean, I, I, Peter, I, I guess my issue here is that we need to debate how the site is used. Uh, this is my way of thinking, an artificial line, uh, that needs to be removed. So we have a clear running room to debate how it, the, the whole site should be used. You know, absent, uh, removing it, the impulse, assuming that the city is going to move forward with a proposal that includes housing on the site is means it's, it's going to get jammed up against, um, uh, the avenue. And that seems to me to be, ma- maybe that's the way we should go, but I mean, having an open discussion about what we should have here instead of hiding behind a century-old artificial line seems to be the, uh, the right way to go here. And so I'm just proposing that we, uh, we, uh, support, I mean, and by the way, let me just, so, um, I moved that the, that the commission vote to support this, uh, draft testimony as commission testimony. You received it today, uh, in your emails. Yes, I am sorry that the community didn't.
Please, can I please speak?
Okay, I, I move it. Does somebody, does somebody, uh, second?
I second.
Can I please speak? This is the second thing you're voting on tonight that nobody in this room has seen. And you can be sorry as you want about that, but it is not a democratic way to conduct business. And we should be ashamed that this is happening, not once tonight, but twice. Please do not vote on this resolution until the rest of the community has had an opportunity to say something about it. And we can't because we can't see it because you don't put it up on the website.
So commissioners, we have a, um, motion that's been, um, properly laid on the table and seconded. We have had discussion. You want to call for the vote? All commissioners, uh, in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three. All those opposed? Abstentions? Uh, motion carries. Three, zero, three.
Chair Gore, may I speak?
Yeah. Yeah. Zeldin, I don't know if he, Michael, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, I am abstaining from, from this. I support the proposition, but I, 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 I respect the comment of the last speaker that resolutions that we pass should be noticed and, um, we should hear feedback on. So Peter, I think this is great testimony. I think you should give it. But I'm, I'm not, I'm abstaining from whether or not it should be, um, commission testimony or just your testimony. And any commissioner who wants to sign on to your testimony, as we did before, you can say Peter Goslin and, and, and uh, offer this testimony, but I don't think it should be ANC testimony with this short notice period.
And I, um, I definitely respect all those comments. I'm just going to remind commissioners that when we have, um, and it's not saying that it's, you know, a rationale, but it is very frequent around budget testimony time, oversight testimony time, um, to get testimony through. We did not do that this first year because we did not have any commissioners volunteer to write testimony. Um, and I ended up writing the budget letter. But if we are going to do what we typically do and write testimony for budget and, um, oversight, we will typically, you know, have a lot of things coming in at the last moment. So it's tough. We will definitely try to do better, but it's not something, you know, that we can always control. And with that, the time is eight thirty-six.
May I speak?
You can, but the meeting is adjourned.
So I think we need to commit, uh, Zach Ferguson recommended that and highlighted that the ANC can meet offline and can discuss these issues.
Sure, we can talk about that.
I'd like to, I'd like to speak. I'd like to speak because this issue.
Has been adjourned. You're out of order. It is eight thirty-six. We have got to clean up the room. No, no, no. Please, we are trying to do the best we can and we have to set the example. The meeting was supposed to, right. And we will not have the ability to use this room if we do not get out of here on time tonight. I have adjourned the meeting and I'm asking you to respect that, please, so that we can close up and get the room closed down. Thank you.